This is Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Limbo.
Yes.
Mrs. Trav.
Yes.
Mr. McEnroe.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to call the order December 7, 2010, meeting to save the Board of Education. Mr. Board Secretary, this meeting has been noted as a point for the old Republic Meeting Act.
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnroe.
Everybody please stand. Before we recite the pledge tonight, if you could just have a moment of silence. Sixty-nine years ago today, twenty-four Americans were killed when the Empire of Japan attacked our military bases at Pearl Harbor. So let's dedicate this pledge to those that lost their lives by saying it real loud.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Fano, we have a couple of presentations to you.
Yes, we have a few from Arlo School. First, they see all light path grant. Mr. Byrne, would you like to please introduce your staff that will come up and discuss? And first of all, I would like to thank you guys for doing a great job. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I just would let you basically talk more about the grant that you received.
Thank you, Dr. Fano. We thank you very much for giving us the opportunity this evening to be able to present a proposal that we were able to prepare to the, actually to cableition. Mrs. Scully, Mrs. Meredith Scully, she's second grade at Arlo School, and Ms. Reguli DeMayo, she's first grade at Arlo, and I co-authored a program which was also reviewed by a number of teachers at Arlo to look at something that we hold very, very dear to us, and that is how do we improve instruction? Now, the purpose of our program tonight is to be very interactive with you. That's why we're using a smart board. So we're actually going to be asking for volunteers later on to participate in some activities that we have for you. We have for you this evening just a very brief overview of what the program entailed. Basically, it involves, and we were very fortunate today to have Optimum come to us and actually present us with the physical check, which is one with the cash, as opposed to this very large one, which was given to us at a conference back in November, where we were told that we were one of ten schools in the state of New Jersey that had been awarded this grant. And actually, at the conference, we were only one of three schools that was asked to actually go up and give a little spiel about what we were trying to do. We were very fortunate to be able to share with the district that we are the recipients of $10,000, which we're going to use to fund our program, which is called TWIST, Teaching, Writing with Interactive Smart Technology. We are going to purchase three smart boards, projectors, document cameras, webcams, and carts that we are going to place into three classrooms, a first grade, second grade, and third grade, to look at what we're doing in terms of writing skills development. And then, as you can see here, that, I think Optimum liked this, we're going to break this out to five years of research, in terms of what we're looking at in terms of writing skills development and reading comprehension. Now, what we also did with this to show the validity of what we're doing is we've actually set up control groups and test groups with our children and with our faculty. So then, this is a whole-school initiative in terms of what we're trying to do at Arlo, because we believe very, very strongly in this idea of authentic learning. And through this presentation tonight, we hope to be able to demonstrate to you why that's so important to us and to all learning. They'll pull this thing here for us. This was today, when they came to our media center and they were able to present the check for us, to us, which we spent. Okay. One of my chief roles as a principal is to be the instructional leader of our school. My job is to facilitate instruction. My job is to empower our teachers in terms of what we're trying to do, to align where we are with our instructional strategies and student achievement. So what I've been doing is I've been looking very carefully at what our data is in terms of our children. Basically, what you see, what I'm most concerned about when we started looking at this data was how are our special education students doing in terms of writing? We know that special education students have difficulty with two things, incidental learning and generalized learning. And because of that, we were very interested to see what they were going to do in terms of the writing. Now, Dr. Fano, I'll go through this briefly. What I was, what we were concerned about was how our special education students were doing, especially in terms of our regular education students, and then obviously our total, our total students, 2007. 2008 is significant, because 2008 is the year that we introduced our new reading series, Heartwork. So we knew we'd get a bump. We were very pleased, obviously, to share with you that our bump, we thought, was rather significant in terms of what we're doing here in terms of our special education students. Now, I had to tell you that I'm a very honest person, and so I hide behind the facts. My concern was that, look at our generalized, with the bump. Now, when we jumped to 2009, we're able to have more complete state data, and I think that, having been in our second year of the program, we see something very significant here. Look at the jump from 2008, 2009. Look at how we compare with the state mean, in terms of special ed, district factor group. Jump to 2010, look at the growth, look at the state mean, DFG mean, look where we are. Now, the reason that this grant can vouch was because we had determined why. Why did this occur? What I'd like to be able to share with you very distinctly is that in 2008, not only did we introduce the Heartwork program to us and look at six plus one traits of writing far more definitively, but we also received for the first time a smart board. Now, presently in Arlo School, we have two smart boards. They float, or I should say, the teachers fight over them, because of that, they know the value of smart boards. We're very, very pleased to share with you that one of the most aggressive members of finding that smart board every day for a room was one of our special education teachers. And so, we believe that because of what she did and what other teachers were able to do, that we saw some significant growth here. Now, when we wrote to Optimum for this sixteen, seventeen-page project that we did, we contended that we could duplicate this growth in special ed in terms of generalized, because as you can see, backstone line, that rate of growth isn't where we like it to be, especially relative to state mean, district mean, DFG mean. Now, I got to tell you, it's a hard thing for a principal to stand up in front of a public, and tell you, we're doing a great job in one area, but we need to improve it enough. But I'm happy to share with you that we have a solution. And that's what we'd like to talk to you about tonight. So theoretically, what I want to just explain to you is that we didn't just pull this out of the air. This is something that we just thought of because we had nothing better to do than spend time writing this grant. We just believe very strongly in some very, very basic theoretical applications of what we know as educators to be effective. Basically, what we did was we applied Jean Piaget's cognitive psychology to technology. Because basically, what we looked at was when Piaget looked at thinking, Piaget looked at it from a, the point of view that learning was going to occur through abstract symbolic reasoning. It has a number of different stages in terms of development. The one that we're pertaining to in terms of elementary school deals with the pre-operational concrete objects. Concrete objects basically are telling us that, as I've said here, is that children will logically and systematically manipulate those symbols relating to a concrete object, i.e. that's where the document camera comes in, because that's what we just showed you in terms of what we did, the Roscoe means. We are able now, through the use of a document camera funneling through a smart board, to be able to take real-time learning for children, which the ladies will explain to you in a few minutes as well, in terms of getting that right out there to children. Now, we also believe that the work of Lev Vygotsky, a Russian, in terms of that social interaction interplays with this as well. Based upon that cognitive psychology and also organizational theory in terms of systems thinking, we believe that we're really onto something, I got to tell you. And we think we're really onto it because the fact that we know that as adults, one of the main difficulties we have in terms of not only our professional career, and that is in terms of our social interactions, is that there's a, there's a lag in time between cause and effect when an event occurs. We believe through the use of the document camera, when a child writes, for instance, we can take that piece of writing immediately, put it right up there on the document camera, the child sees it in real time. There's no longer that delay of having to go get a transparency done, put the transparency up here, because the transparencies can't be made in the classroom, down in the copy room. We don't have that delay anymore. Also, one of the things that we were always concerned about with the use of children with an overhead projector is they have to stand there in front of it, there's this very sharp light. This eliminates that. You've got a document camera, so you can take their writing immediately and be able to work with it. We also believe this is very important in terms of their training for adults. One of the things that we obviously are looking at very carefully is the fact that our children someday are going to become here, and they're going to have to learn how to deal with many different things. So they're creating these mental models. Piaget talks about how the whole constructivism form of psychology is the fact that they're creating meaning in terms of their interactions with materials. This is enabling us to be able to do that, because the rate of change for these children is going to be incredible, absolutely incredible. For instance, when we went to our conference, we had a presentation by Cisco, and talks about this white paper they produced, which is Education 3.0. And it's absolutely amazing when you go through this in terms of the projections that as of 2010 that they're thinking about. Also, recently, the United States Department of Education has introduced their technology plan for 2010, which is a very extensive document in terms of their projections, in terms of where we're going to go with all this in the future. Basically, what we're going to do is we're going to run control and test groups with, as I said, the three teachers. We're going to have a control group, a test teacher, and a validator to make sure that our information is correct, because we're going to do a writing rubric once a month with fiction and nonfiction. And so, we're going to track that research to see how it goes. In the future, we're going to fold this into reading comprehension strategies in terms of what we're looking at. And also, in terms of staff development through me, to our staff, in terms of classroom instruction that works through Bob Marzano, and also some new work that's come out in terms of technology. Basically, the classroom instruction that works is based upon this research coming from McCrell, which is looking at effective classroom strategies that have been used in over fourteen-hundred studies. They have been consolidated in this particular book, which we believe is going to cause us to have a significant bump on as well, in terms of how effectively our children are thinking. And that's the bottom line. So, in a few moments, I'm going to turn this over to these nice ladies, and they're going to give you some very practical applications of what we're doing in terms of this whole integration about smart board and document camera. The key element to this program is that integration of the smart board and the document camera. We don't believe that we're going to be able to achieve the results we're looking for unless we're able to have that integration, that particular document camera. As we said, we're thinking very clearly about the fact that the implications cannot just be limited to writing. Ladies are going to explain that to you in terms of how we're going to use this in a classroom. And all goes back to that aspect of authentic learning. These children are seeing it in real time. These children are able to manipulate it, they're able to construct meaning. It's a pur, really pure Piagetian model in terms of how children are going to think and how they're going to learn. And we're very excited to be able to share with you tonight that Optimum throws a good idea, and we have a check for $10,000, which we can present to your board in terms of our work, and we hope that it's the first of many more to be able to present. So this is Scully, and Ms. DeMayo, I turn it over to you.
You're welcome. We promised to try to be brief, especially since Mr. Byrne took down about fifteen minutes. Mrs. Scully and I put together a, the process of writing that we will do in our classroom. Usually, this happens in three days, four days, or five days. We usually break it down in our writer's workshops. And we always start off with reviewing the six plus one trait. So we always start off with ideas.
And ideas, basically, we always show a light bulb, because an idea, when you have an idea, you can have a bright idea, and you need to make sure that that bright idea is shining throughout your whole writing piece. So our little light bulb is growing, because as they have an idea, they develop it and add details, their ideas also grow. One of the other traits is word choice, and word choice is just making sure that the children are using vocabulary that's exciting and that makes the reader want to read their piece of writing. That little girl's so excited, her hands are in the air, and she wants to be reading that piece of writing.
For conventions, the symbol is a eraser. For the purpose of, conventions are making sure you have capitalizing letters and punctuation marks, spelling is corrected, and it can all be easily changed with an eraser, and it can be fixed. The other one is organization. And for organization, the symbol is a puzzle piece, because you need to make sure that everything is in order and it fits together like a puzzle, that your story is staying on the one main idea, but it goes together progressively.
Okay, our last two are voice, which is the little cheerleader, because when you use your voice in your writing, your personality shines through, and they can tell that you're the one that wrote the piece, wrote the writing piece. And for sentence fluency, we have music notes, because when your writing sounds fluent, it's pleasing to the ear, and it sounds good, people want to read it. Your sentences don't all start the same way, and again, with word choice, you make it so that every sentence doesn't start with, "I like, I like, I like," and the kids learn that it needs to sound pleasing, and they can't always repeat the same things over and over again.
So in class, a lot of the times, we will read a story to get the kids' ideas going, and with our document camera, we would be able to sometimes show the story more clear and close up, be able to talk about the characters, they can really fill themselves inside the story. You know, boys and girls can come up, they can point to things in the story, kind of get ideas about what they would want to do, what they want to write about, and you know, often we start drafting in a free-writing journal, trying to get those ideas together. Now, a lot of the times, we always model something first, and then they put that together for their writing. So in a minute, you'll see how we would model, starting to get our ideas together. What is your first big main idea, like the light bulb? What are you going to be writing about? And then what are your details? So we would model that we're going to write about the topic of winter is wonderful, and there's so many different things we could do in the wintertime. So we would bring together that we have three ideas. And the first one, that's snow days. Everybody loves snow days. We get home from school for the day, we get to play home, play in Snowville, get to do different things, hang out with our family. Our second idea that still relates to our main idea of winter is wonderful is because we can build snowmen on our snow days. And the last thing is we get to drink hot chocolate, keep us warm. So with the students, we would be able to discuss this more and talk about who we do these things with, where we do them, why we enjoy doing them, and start getting their engines running.
And with this, they also, they could come up, they could press the button, so that they're not just sitting in their seats. It gets them up, it gets them moving, and it gets them excited about writing. So then, they would have their own copy of this at their desk, and what we could do is call up a few friends after they pair shared with one another. We can have them provide some of the details that they came up with, and they would be able to then write them on the smart board. So if one of theirs for winter is wonderful is that they get to go skiing, they can come up and they can write the word skiing, or in the interest of time, I'm just going to do it for right now, and then you can actually change the text into typing, so that if a kid comes up and they don't write very neatly, it's just a lot clearer, it's good for the visual learners. And then we would fill in two more details that go with the main idea of how winter is wonderful.
Something that we stress is word choice. We try to make sure that the students have juicy words, makes your, your writing more interesting, puts a better picture inside their head. So with this, we can demonstrate that we have three words to describe, don't worry about winter, we have fun, cold, and good, and we want to use better words. The kids are always saying, "I like this because it's fun," or "it's fun, it's fun, it's good." So we would show that another word for fun would be thrilling, another word for cold would be chilly, and for good, it would be delicious.
And we could give those words to the children, and then for the ones that could come up with their own words, or by using the document camera, we can use a thesaurus, they can come up with other synonyms for these words, and they can then add them to a snowflake. So instead of saying fun or thrilling, they might want to say that something is exciting, so they can come up and they can write the word exciting on one of the snowflakes. And then they can actually move the snowflake with their word to where it belongs. And it gives them some new words to use when they're writing.
And with that last one, you know, once again, she could change the writing to the typing, which I personally like as a first-grade teacher, because a lot of the students haven't developed some of their full muscle skills and things, and their handwriting we're working on. So that is definitely a benefit for first grade. The next step, and this is also something very difficult that I know in first grade they have trouble with, and I know also teaching second grade, it's Meredith does, getting their ideas to a complete sentence, and not just winter is wonderful because snow days, building snowmen, and so forth. So the next step would be taking their idea and being able to put into one complete sentence with good sentence fluency. Now, we have up on here the little blinds, because a lot of our students, you know, if they see this, they just see a lot of lines, they don't know, my goodness, what am I going to write about, how am I going to write this? So with the blind, we can cover the rest, so they can focus on one thing that they want to write about, or one idea that they're talking about.
So they would take the idea, no, they even, they would turn it into a complete sentence, such as, "On snow days, we don't have to go to school," or "On snow days, I get to stay home and play with my friends." And then they could come up, and again, they could write it, and they also have this on a paper in front of them, so that they're sitting there, and they're also all engaged doing something, they're not just watching and seeing three kids come up each time to fill it in.
So for this, we want to organize our ideas. Now that we have them into complete sentences, we want to be able to put them, you know, like we said, organization like the puzzle piece, make sure they fit, make sure they make sense, and have good sentence fluency. So they would be able to look at what their sentences were, and this would be our example, and we would be able to look at the different sentences that we're using to describe that how winter is wonderful, and we want to put them in order. We would look at order words, like first, then, and finally.
Okay, and then once they've circled the words first, then, finally, we can go back to the idea of the main idea. We can have them pick which one is the main idea. The main idea always comes first when we write a paragraph, so they can come up and they can try to identify the main idea. And with that, with the idea of the growing light bulb, we can use a little magnifying glass to have that main idea grow, and then they can, you know, also read the other sentences like this, but the important one is that the main idea is their big idea. So now they see that idea again, and it's big. So they can come on down, and they can move, oh, wait a second. They can move the main idea into the snowman's hat, they can find the one that says first and put it at the top, they can find the one that says next or then, and they can put their sentences in the right order on the snowman.
Now, with conventions, as we said, that's the eraser, it's going back, fixing capitalization, punctuation, and spelling, and this is really where the document camera really helps, because we're pushing through. So with here, we can push the document camera icon on the smart board, and we can look up at their writing. And this is something we can do individually or as a whole group, and the thing that we really like about this is, for our lower-level kids, we can actually write on the writing and say, "Oh, this wasn't supposed to be capitalized, that should be lowercase," or "This was misspelled," and circle things. And then it's on their writing, so the whole class is learning that they make these mistakes, and this is how we're fixing them, and then they have that writing on their paper. The other thing is that on the smart board, for our higher-level kids, where we want to teach them how to correct it, but we want them to go back and make their own corrections, we can write on the smart board, or we can say, "Okay, that's not supposed to be capitalized either, is that sentence, because it's not the beginning of the sentence." And then when they take their paper away, they still have it without the writing, and they can go back and make those corrections.
You could print that out, maybe.
You can. You can print it, and you can also save it, so that if you don't have time for it, if you want to look at it again later, you can capture the screen, and then it saves it however you last left it.
So if we wanted to make the corrections while he has his paper, right now, we could just press capture and close, and keep this picture, and he can have his writing down at his seat.
Right, which is great, too, when we do things on it and their teacher are absent, and if they've missed, you know, completing a graphic organizer, or they've missed the planning stage. We can actually print out what the class has done, and then they have a copy of what they missed from the previous day, which is great. And the last trait, which is actually the plus-one trait, is presentation. And for presentation, we said there are two different things that you can do using the document camera. We can put the child's writing up on the camera, and then they can stand to the side and read it, so the paper's not right in front of their face as they often do. We can also have them come up and use a highlighter or a magnifying glass to show their paper. Or we can have the student be on television, where they stand and they read their paper, and the entire class gets to see them. And again, with the screen capture feature, we can also put their writing there, capture it, save it, and put it up on our website, so that their parents get to see what they're writing in class, much faster than if it hung out in the hallway for a month and then it went home. They can see right away, with that school-to-home connection they can also get by using it.
And one other thing I like about this is, often when the kids are presenting something, they're talking a lot like this, and they put their paper right up in front of their face, and no one can hear them, you can't see anything. So with this, everyone else notices that their paper's right in front of their face, everybody can see it, and they can see it. So it kind of helps them with their presentation.
We're almost done. Okay, there are other applications that we came up with for things that we can do. Instead of just using the six plus one for writing paragraphs, we said the document camera can also be used for letter writing. And we teach letter writing, we usually use a person as an example for letter writing, because there are parts of a letter and there are parts of a person. So we can have a volunteer come stand right in the middle of the room. Thank you, Mrs. Waters. We're going to take you a little picture.
Oh, I didn't know.
So we can open the document camera, and we can point it towards one of the children. A little, over a little bit more. Did he? No, keep going. And then back a little. There you go.
So we would capture that picture. Okay, Mrs. Waters, thank you very much.
Want to have Mrs. Waters say it now?
That's fabulous. So with the tools that are on the smart board, we can cut Mrs. Waters out.
Okay, so now she's saved by herself. Get rid of the other one.
Mrs. Waters, hand away.
Hit the volunteer.
There she is.
Back and better than ever.
Yes. So with this, you know, we usually use a paper person.
Letter-writing Larry.
So we would move up, and we know that our letter starts with our heading, and that we're going head to toe with our writing, and then the greeting usually comes from, by their mouth. The body of their writing is right by the body of Mrs. Waters, and then as we go down, we go more toward closing, and we finish off right by our And then as we go down, we go more to our closing, and we finish off right by our feet with our signature. And just the kids get the idea from top to bottom, just like their body, how they write their letter.
And instead of just using this cartoon figure, we're actually using one of the students, so they can relate to it a little bit more. We also said one of the other things that they could do is we could put this child in the story. So then, there's Mrs. Waters, she's enjoying her time at the carnival. And this background is one of the ones that came in the Smart Gallery. The rest of the things that were on here, we did create, but this is one of the ones that's on here. And we've also used this one for math. We've put price tags on the different items, and the kids have gotten to, you know, add up what they would do if they were at the carnival. So it's a good story starter as well.
I especially like this and the other backgrounds, because a lot of my first graders are always saying, I don't know what to write about. I don't know what I want to do. I don't know. In second grade, a lot of, in social studies and science, a way we could also use this is they do landforms. So this is actually a picture from a final project last year, but you can actually put it under the document camera, show the kids as they're making it, as they're molding the clay, how they're making their landforms, and the final presentation of what their landforms are. We can put the document camera on the side, so we can see its volume and its depth.
Okay, we said we could also use it for social studies, and we talk in social studies, we talk a lot, I mean, in science, rather, we talk a lot about plants and plant parts and examining seeds. And one of the things that the kids aren't able to do is actually take a piece of fruit and cut it open, or take a vegetable and cut it open, and be able to really examine the different parts of the fruit. So we can actually take an apple or some other type of fruit, we can cut it open right underneath the document camera, and then we can show them where the seeds are inside of it.
And we can just point out part, different parts of the apple, where the seed is. With the lights, it's a little bright right now. But this is something that a lot of the kids don't get to do, because they obviously cannot use knives, so they're not really a part of the experiment until the actual seeds are removed. And even if I do this in front of the class, they don't get a great view as they do when it's on the document camera.
Okay, and the last thing that we said it could be used for, there are many different applications in math. We've got some different things to show you on how the document camera could be used
I think a lot of the best part about the document camera is those teachable moments, where you find that a kid's not understanding something, or they're having trouble with something, and right away, you want to do, not just for that one student, but you want a full-class lesson. So maybe even if someone kind of gets the topic, but they're having a little difficulty, this one lesson you can do, you can put it right up on the document camera, it's immediate, they all can see it, and they all can use it.
Right, so we said one thing that we could do is measurement. And again, with the lights, it's not showing up that great, but instead of just measuring a picture of an eraser or a picture of a pencil like they do in their math book, they can actually physically come up and put their pencil by the ruler, and we can model how to use a ruler the correct way. We can also use the little judy clocks, when the children use them, to show the time and to show elapsed time, because you could put more than one up here. And again, you can use the split screen, so you can show the starting time, the ending time, and compare the two. We use pattern blocks. You can put the pattern blocks up to create different shapes, to do fractions of shapes. We can use blocks for adding. Many different things we can use. We said you can also play math games by using flashcards. Usually, when we hold them up, we hold them up right in front of, you know, the two children if we're playing around the world or something, and only those two kids really get to see the flashcard. So by putting it up here, the entire class can really participate in the game a little bit better.
So that's, and we hope that you've had a good idea of how we're going to be using this and the different ways that we can be using it. You know, as Meredith said before, there are a lot of different tools and different templates that they have, but for the most part, it does take a while to make the lessons that, like we did, but it's definitely worth it in the long run, it's worth the time and the effort, and the kids truly enjoy it. You know, a lot of them are, at least in first grade, are still having difficulty reading, but they can use their remote to go through 300 channels on a television, or they can work your computer better than you can. So this is just an example of, if we can't really always teach the way that, or they can't learn the way we're teaching, we want to teach the way that they can learn. And this way is definitely what we think is going to help.
You can see that we're very blessed at our own school. We have great teachers, great ideas, and we're really very, very excited about all the things that we're going to learn through this process, because the implications down the line are things that we can't even fathom at the moment. As I said to you before, we're looking to do a research project with them, and Dr. Fonda Kuntess, when I had those three, it was pretty high up, wasn't it? From Game Vision, I started giving them ideas, saying about what we'd like to do. And so maybe they're going to be kind enough to send us another check at some other point in terms of some of the work that we'd like to do. So we thank you very, very much for your time. Anybody have any questions?
All I can say is wow. I mean, we've come a long way since the invention of erasing chalk, what we're taking in the classroom. And, you know, this is amazing technology that we use today. And you're absolutely right, I think the most important thing you said is that we preach the light to learning and use this technology. It's just amazing. This is probably the most informative and best presentation I have seen since I've been on the board. I thank you very much.
I have to take the microphone away from you. Excellent job, ladies. Thank you very much, and Mr. Byrne, thank you. We're on after Mr. Linton, he's patiently been waiting, and Mr. Mackinon, would you like to introduce this segment of Mr. Bill Linton, who'll be doing the presentation as well?
As you know, we're sitting in the portion of the new construction, and over the past five years, now that we've completed this project, we've had some issues, mainly with the architect, and tonight, we're trying to close that out. Mr. Linton from the Linton Law Firm, he's been representing us on this, and he briefed us tonight on how we should conclude with the architect, and I've asked him to go ahead and just brief that in public, so he can inform you, and any questions you have, we'd be very happy to answer. Sir?
Thank you.
Mr. Linton here. I wish I had brought a smartboard, unfortunately, it's just me. My name is Bill Linton, I'm a partner with the firm of Linton Spitzer. As Mr. Mackinon said, we're counsel to the board. We've been assisting the board for several years now with the construction project, and the board has reached a settlement with RSC Architects, who are the architects for the project. And what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the dynamics of a settlement, sort of from a lawyer's perspective, so you understand how we get to where we are. Whenever in litigation, you look at particularly the liability of a professional, you need to think about what does it cost and what do you get? And this board is not in the business of litigation, this board is in the business of educating kids, buying things like smartboards, and every dollar that you spend on things like lawyer's fees is a dollar you don't have to buy things like this. So in talking to the board and in thinking about where we are, we need to think about not only what is it that we can get, but what is it that it's going to cost us to get us what we want to get? Now, in looking at the school project, we're talking about a project here of a total of $41 million, I believe, was the total cost of the construction. The change orders in that project were about $1.2 million that were attributable to architectural issues. Now, does that mean that the architect owes the board $1.2 million because those are the change orders in the project? The answer to that question is no, because in any project, particularly one of that magnitude, you will have unforeseen conditions, you will have design changes that the board has asked for, you'll have many, many issues that do not involve anybody's fault, they're just things that happen in a project of this size. Now, will you also have things that are someone's fault? In any project of this size, there's a fairly high likelihood that you will. But when you're looking at what an architect does and how they do their jobs, there are really two categories of those things that might be somebody's fault, quote-unquote. One is errors, which are things that you pay to have done wrong, and then you have to tear them out and pay again to have them done right. And the second is omissions. For example, in a drawing, if the architect said that you had to have 12 lights in this room, and you have 25 lights, or need 25 lights, that's an omission. In the case of an error, you get nothing for that, because you're paying once to have the work done wrong and paying again to have the work done right. Normally, the law will let you recover the cost of an architectural error. In the case of an omission, if you have specified 12 lights, and you need 25, and you get 25, you have the value of those 25 lights. So in that situation, the architect, even though it was his mistake that you only got 12 lights, the architect is not responsible for paying for the other 13 lights. He may only be responsible for paying for the difference that it costs you, because they weren't included in the original bid and had to be added on later, which may have certain costs attached to it. So that brings us down to how you analyze the errors and omissions on a project like this. When you have a million-two in change orders, out of that million-two, a substantial percentage were things that were unforeseen, a substantial percentage were things that were requested by the board. Another percentage is differences of opinion between the architect and the building department. The architect is allowed to be wrong, he's just not allowed to be negligent. So that if it's a legitimate difference of opinion between the architect and the building department, that's not something that you can recover from the architect for because the building department went the other way. All of which is a long-winded way of saying that the million-two in change orders brings you down to a relatively small amount of money that you could prove was the fault of the architect and was something that the board received no value for. You take that amount of money, and you measure that against what it's going to cost you to get. A value, the value that you're going to get is essentially the difference between the cost of litigation, the cost of experts, and the cost of what you're going to receive at the end. As I said at the beginning, every dollar that you spend on litigation is a dollar you don't get, things like this. In looking at this, we've had a number of discussions with the board, and we've had to answer some pretty hard questions. And the board has directed some pretty hard questions to each other and to the architect. There've been a number of discussions. And the settlement that's before the board right now really has several parts. One part is a waiver by the architect of about $100,000 in claims, that the architect has for work that they claim was done over and above what was in their contract. The second piece of it is providing to the board about $30,000 worth of services and equipment, mainly in the form of blinds that will be installed in, I believe, 20 rooms. The third piece of it is a reservation of the board's right to go after the architect if, God forbid, there is personal injury or property damage by reason of something that the architect did wrong. What we didn't want to do is put you in a position where if something happened two years from now and it had to do with something the architect did wrong, there would be no recovery. So those are the three pieces of the settlement that's before the board. We would recommend it to the board, not because it's a wonderful idea, but because the cost of the battle is unlikely to be worth what you would recover at the end of the day. And unfortunately, that's the kind of business decision that when these folks have to sit up here and account to the taxpayers, it's a business decision that not everybody is happy about, I'm sure you'll hear that, but it's a business decision that at the end of the day is certainly one worth considering. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Not just time opening up for the public, just please come up and state your name. Use the microphone, thank you. Just one right there. Oh, good.
I'll share.
I'm probably going to be glad to let a courtship come in and twenty-two minutes free. Mr. Lynn, I attended meetings where the architect admitted error of not including a firewall. This was possibly 200, well, they said, well, some of the cost was over 200-some thousand dollars of their error. I hear you, it's like $130,000 possibly to the settlement. Well, it blows my mind, as a taxpayer resident in this community, where right down the street, the county can put together a school that has an indoor swimming pool, and it didn't cost the county residents not $30 million. This whole project has cost us close to $50 million. And I think it's unfair to the taxpayers to eat all the errors that the architect, to begin with, has made just point addition to the school. And that's a lot of money. They had to go back for a referendum to take the money that was left over from Arleth to add on to this. And that is an awful lot of money. And what you're, I hear you say, well, taking a dollar away from a student. But what about the taxpayers? And what about the cost to the taxpayers?
Mr. Kuntess, I think that's a decision the board is making, not Mr. Linton. Mr. Linton has just given us...
No, but I'm just telling him a viewpoint of a taxpayer.
Understood.
And it's not just me, this is the feeling of the whole community, because they are very, very annoyed when they go by and they walk, you know, $50 million sitting there or whatever, and they read in the paper all the overruns, all the, you know, the extra. $1.2 million for errors and omissions is a lot of money. And you compare this right down the street on Cheese Creek Road, how they can put together a school that has to be specially equipped for handicapped children to attend, and it cost $30 million for a whole school with an indoor swimming pool. So something's drastically wrong. And I just feel like the taxpayer in this town is not getting the bang for the buck.
Can I answer just one issue?
Sure, sure.
Just to address the issue of the firewall, which is probably the single largest issue of all the issues involving the architect. It goes back to what I was talking about originally, the difference between errors and omissions. When the architect said that they made an error, what they were saying was that they omitted to put in the original plan, the firewall that should have been put in because the building department required. That doesn't mean, as I said before, that the architect would necessarily be held legally responsible for the entire cost of that firewall, because the district did, in fact, receive the value of that firewall. What the architect might be held responsible for is the additional cost of having the firewall installed after it was bid. That might be a number, if the firewall is $200,000, that could be a number of, say, $30,000 or $40,000, not 200. And that's why it's important to compare the cost of something like that against the cost of proving that the architect was, in fact, negligent. Because it's not a question of interpretation, it's a question of negligence.
Mr. Lynn, I questioned the architect, I was the person here. Lynn, you probably were here also, I don't know where the other...
I was not.
The other construction attorney was here. I questioned the architect, and he admitted, under, on tape or whatever, that he did make an error and he omitted the firewall. This is not the first school that he added in addition to. He added, he renovated Samuel School, he added an addition onto Arleth. And I asked him, is it a state law that requires a firewall? And did you put a firewall in the other school? And yes, he did. So he admitted his error, he just felt it didn't need one here, and then found out later it did. Now, I don't think the taxpayers' cereal should eat that and the cost to us for his error.
I think we're saying the same thing.
And I'm coming from the taxpayer's point of view. And if I hired a contractor for my own, I want to make sure I'm getting what I'm paying for and what's necessary and what's up to code in my community. And apparently, it wasn't up to code, and the code enforcement area, even speaking to them, weren't satisfied with all of the errors and whatnot. So to me, it's a real faulty project for $50 million that the taxpayers have to eat. And I'm sorry, saying that it wouldn't be costly in litigation, well, then there's something wrong with your firm if you can't represent this community for our errors, and rather for the errors that were, to rectify and to recoup that money. Thank you.
And I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't be pleased to represent this board. All I'm suggesting to you is that we don't want to be in the business of handling lawsuits where the only people who win are the lawyers. And that unfortunately could be the situation here, is very likely to be the situation here, and that's why we're recommending something that really is not in our economic interest, but we're recommending it to the board nonetheless.
Mr. Lynn, I have found out in this community, it just seems to be many times that it just, it's where the judicial system is acting on a community, be it planning board, be it whatever, it seems like common sense, and either we don't hire the right attorney or something is drastically wrong, that we should lose our cases where people know, I mean, everyone's dead, it's not feasible, it's not right, and we still don't receive that community.
Again, I don't disagree, the costs of the judicial system are what they are, and unfortunately, none of us are in a position to change it.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Let me just make my two cents, and I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Kuntess, and you said that before, but the buck stops with me, as the president of the board. This project we started in 2005, and I lived with this for all five years, and I finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I've said several times with this microphone that we will pursue litigation against RSC. And at that point, it was done somewhat out of emotion, after understanding... And at, at that point, it was done somewhat out of emotion, after understanding with the construction. When we came on the board, and I think everybody is on this board, came on this board other than Mr. Syak, once this building started getting built or was approved by the taxpayer. And I would be the first to raise my hand and say, I didn't know much about building big buildings before I came on the Board of Education. I came on the Board of Education for the presentation you've seen this evening. Okay, that's why I am here. We hired professionals, and I've said our professionals have failed us. I think Mr. Lynn and his law firm did an exceptional job of representing us on this particular issue. I'm going to have to make a decision. This is a fifty million dollar project with one point two million dollar change orders, that's about three percent of the total cost of the project, when in general, I think it's seven or eight percent is average for a project. In New Jersey, just look at the tunnel, if the governor just canceled, look what's going on, and all other types of construction. We're very fortunate, we have this building here, and it's, it's finished. There was a time on this board that Mr. Syak and I and Mr. Nembo and Mr. Bishata were contemplating and not getting this project built. It is built, and that's a lot to say, we have the keys. I don't think you, Mrs. Kilcombs, and I agree with you, what you've said, would come to this microphone and pat me on the back because I spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to possibly go after a hundred thousand. We had to make a business decision here. When Mr. Lynn first briefed us about possible litigation, he said, in order to have a case, in order to have a case, what you're going to have to do is hire professionals, other architects and other professionals, to look at the design and determine whether there's been negligence here on the part of the architect. To do that, we're looking at about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars, and we haven't even bought the case. Okay? So we had to make business decision number one. Business decision number two was that because of the cost, the delay in the project, we could have been very well sued by the general contractor. The board made again another business decision to settle with that contract and make sure that there was language that they could not pursue us any further from that point. The third business decision is what we're going to make tonight, is whether we're going to go out and spend probably two to three hundred thousand dollars to try to approve a hundred thousand dollars if, if we even win the case. What's most compelling to me is when Mr. Lynn has said to me, not once, not twice, but three times, that we're the attorney and we're the ones that are going to benefit from this, and we're advising you that probably this is not going to be a case that you want to sue. We settled for probably what comes out to about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars in blinds for windows and the architectural work that they prepared in preparation for the auditorium. And if you have not seen the auditorium, I suggest you do that on the way out of the building tonight to see the final product. So we made a business decision. I will take, with every spears come my way, my armor does not kink, I know I made the right decision. If this was my money and my house, I would not be gambling to try to sue somebody to get a hundred thousand dollars and spend two hundred thousand dollars doing it if I win. That's the decision I've made. Now, you can, you can twist that any way you want to. I don't think the majority of the community, as you say, feels that way. I speak to people whose kids use this school and other schools in this district, and when they come in here, they have the same feeling that I have when I see this. This is what we deserve here in Saro. So for fifty million dollars, you compare it to the school on Cheese Creek Road, which I've been in, I don't know if you have, I've been in there three different times, and I watched it during construction because the same general contractor built that, that built this. It's comparing apples and oranges. This was a two thousand eight, nine addition to a school that was built in the nineteen sixties. Electrical upgrades, all kinds of problems that went into it. Any architect, any contractor will tell you, I'd much rather build that new school on Cheese Creek Road than add on to this monstrosity and come out what you got. So to compare those two things, look at the cost, it's really not fair comparison. The bottom line is, the buck stops in this seat. I have no problems telling you that I'm making a business decision, and I know tomorrow morning, when I get up and I stagger into my bathroom and I shave and look at myself in the mirror, I know I made the right decision for the taxpayers of Saro. Now, I've lived with this project, I know intimately certain columns in the building that we've dealt with, and I know that this right decision has been made. I'm sticking with that decision, I will defend that to my dying day. Thank you.
I'm sure it's probably a lesson learned and to go here forward. And if you have renovations and additions to other schools, it's a lesson learned.
Ms. Kilcombs, I hope to God we don't build it on my school, on my sport.
I'm sure we find a lot of support for it, which is a lot more beneficial to the students than what we do.
Thank you, madam. Okay. Yes, while Mr. Byrne is here, let me, yes. No, thank you, Mr. Lynn, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Enjoy the holidays.
Give me back my microphone.
In the public, we brought our attention about overcrowding in our elementary schools, particularly at Eisenhower, and we've took that seriously, we, we formed a committee and we met most recently with the elementary school principal. And we've come to some type of, I guess, solution that Mr. Byrne is going to go ahead and make changes.
Actually, it's Dr. Alphano, myself.
Dr. Alphano N., who will be here with us this evening to talk about the situation
as, as Mr. McEnone has presented to you in terms of what the present situation is in the district. When we met, we decided upon a key study analysis in terms of how we were going to present to you this briefing in, in regard to what, what's the problem, what are the issues pertaining to that problem, and what kinds of action can we present to the board in terms of further studying, in terms of how we can solve it. Facts are clear, we have two elementary schools here in Saro that had increased enrollments for this particular year, Eisenhower and Truman. We've heard, actually at this board meeting and PTO meetings and so forth, about the district in terms of personal concerns about what does this mean for those children in those schools, what's going to happen next year and beyond. Presently, we have also a situation here in the district where we have two schools, Arlo and Truman, that actually have a decrease in enrollment. The figures are up here for us to look at. This is something that we have to bear in mind in terms of what are the issues surrounding what we're going to do here. Basically, as, as we've listed in here, is we need to ascertain whether the present growth that we're seeing in those two elementary schools will continue. Is there a pattern to that? Do we see because of what's happening at Eisenhower, attendance area, are we going to see, are we going to see continued growth there? Arlo, in all the years I've been there, we've always hovered around between five and five twenty-five number of students. This year we're four seventy-three, we dropped. Is that going to be a pattern for us? About student mobility, do we have a situation where we have children who are coming in and out of our district, and that's causing this influx right now? Which follows along with the next point, which is, as you well know, we are the only district around that has all-day kindergarten. As a result of that, do we have people here who are here just for that? And they're going to move on? Or are they going to come to us more and more because of the fact that we have all-day kindergarten? And as we've talked about already, you know, what's going to happen in the future here? Is this something that's we're going to see sustained in the district? Or is this something that's just a, a one-year anomaly? And obviously, long-term, what's that going to mean for other schools? Potential plan of action that we want to present to the board, to the public, in terms of where we go from here. Obviously, when you're dealing with overcrowding situation, we've got to be looking at plan of action consisting of a demographic study. Is this something that we're going to see that's going to be sustained over a period of time? Or is this, as I said before, just something that's going to incur short-term? Two, it's a difficult word to say, it brings out a lot of emotion in people, but is it, is it feasible for us to look at possible redistricting of the elementary school attendance areas in order to ease overcrowding existing in certain schools? And as you saw before, with Arlo and Wilson, we're down, we've got room. Three, we presently have the luxury of having our special area teachers, notably our art, music, PE, our brother Spanish teachers, having their own separate rooms in our elementary schools. We need to capture more rooms, there's a possibility of being able to put those particular teachers on carts and moving from place to place. Again, short-term solution versus long-term. As we all know, as we've just heard, everything we do, it costs something. We need to look at, we need to look at in terms of where they want to go with that. Following up with that, it's difficult to come across what was just presented, but facility study, do we need to look at possibly renovations of other, of other buildings? We're, we're looking at possible Slower School, Neighborhood K-Three School, elementary principal. We love K-Three schools, we love neighborhood schools, they know lots of the community, they have a very vital role to play in the community. Is Slower School possibly an area for us to explore in terms of easing that overcrowding? Actually, as you can well imagine, in terms of where Slower is located, in terms of Eisenhower in particular, that would be a great, possibly a great benefit for our children there. What about Eisenhower School? Do we put an addition on Eisenhower School? Because that's where the growth is. Obviously, many different plans of action, and the purpose of this briefing is just to be able to present to the board different ideas, multiple different ideas, where do we go from here? Because every time we look at something, we always have to look at where we want to go. We're not knee-jerk with, with ideas. We need to understand that we need to take care of children, and we need to begin with the end in mind. Now, I know it's been a long meeting so far, but what I like to do when I look at, at issues, is I like to look at the family fathers. What do they, what kind of direction can they give us? Obviously, they were faced with far more difficult tasks than we are here now, but they had the wisdom to be able to look at those things. And so I present to you the thoughts of, on John Adams, second president of the United States of America, first vice president of the United States of America, a co-author of the Declaration of Independence, which according to, you know, to give a little thing about our twist program, my understanding is the Declaration of Independence was revised like eighty times in terms of, before the full group of people decided that was what they wanted. So we have hope, please. But Mr. Adams, I think he said it very nicely to us, he gives this great deal of wisdom in terms of the issues that we're faced with right now, if I may, I'd like to read it to you. The laws of the liberal education of youth are so extremely wise and useful that to a humane and generous mind, no expense for this purpose would be large enough. The purpose of, of our presentation here tonight is to get to think, so we're doing it on our own, so we do every day in our schools, to think, and kids are the thing, principals are the thing, parents are the thing, children are the thing. We present this to you this evening.
Can I do this?
Sure. Jim, Mr. Byrne and I and the elementary principals decided to say, okay, what are we actually going to do? What are we going to ask the board? The first thing is, where do we go from here? We've done a lot of study as far as the elementary principals, we've even had a couple of meetings with the Board of Education, this committee on the redistricting. And what we're asking the board tonight is to do a demographic study. And we'd like the board to approve or, or give us some direction on whether or not we should do a full-blown demographic study for the next five years. We can allocate, I know I used a, a few companies, could be up to ten thousand dollars to do the, to do the study, so they're going to, and myself, the elementary principals, in redistricting some of the students that would normally go to Eisenhower School next year and even Truman School, and actually relocating them to either to Arlo School and/or Wilson School, so that we can ease some of the overcrowding. Well, one thing we really haven't talked about is, this is all a moot point until the budget comes out. I've heard all kinds of questions, concerns, that this year, you know, we're not so sure what our state aid is going to be. Last year, our budget was cut by five percent of the appropriation, okay? Due to simple math, that's basically, we lost about almost four million dollars last year. There's no way we could sustain any kind of increase in staff if we lose two, three, four million dollars. So everything is contingent upon, even if we open up classroom space in Eisenhower, we can't put the students in there and, and put teachers in those classrooms, additional teachers. Certainly, any kind of redistricting plan we put together is not going to be worthwhile. And so we're still looking at that. And a huge part of any plan is obviously we're going to need funds. We, we're rescheduling the high school, we're looking at possibly modifying the schedule, that's going to cost teachers. We're adding new courses, that's going to cost teachers. Our enrollment is relatively stationary right now, it's not really going up. Certain elementary schools, it's gone up, maybe forty, fifty students over the last couple of years, others have dropped. The middle school and the high school, the middle school is dropped, the high school is increased. So between the SUES, the middle school and the high school, right now, things are looking pretty good in regard to the elementary, a result of enrollments. So in answer to your question, we really do need to do a demographic study. And Mr. DeAndrea and myself will send out a proposal to try to get three quotes so that we can certainly do, do the study right and really take a look at whether or not our enrollment in the next five years is really going to go up and where it's going to go up. And for us to just do a basic analysis of where the, the growth is, would do it injustice. So I'm, I'm going to request the board and, and at the next meeting, we can determine whether, you know, hopefully, we could start looking at some groups that do a demographic study. To be honest with you, I haven't done one in fifteen, twenty years. So I really don't know, and the gentleman, I think, that did the last one was about ten years ago here.
More than ten.
More than ten years. So obviously, we'd have to go out and solicit and do the right thing for the children. And there's a lot of things that we put up on these boards, and certainly, money's going to dictate what we do, there's no doubt about it. Any questions?
I'll open up the public round, if you have any questions, now would be the time. Just come up and just, you state your name, yes, you can state it, just state your name for the record.
Allison Herbeck. Um, all right, so let's do a what-if. What if the demographic study shows that, okay, it's everything's going to remain stable, but Eisenhower's still up here and Arlo's-
We'd have to redistrict.
So you can't do that for the next school year?
We are going to do that. We're going to, we're going to try to take a look at, look at certain areas of the town where the, the students normally would go to Eisenhower, and obviously, we have to make sure that there's no siblings in Eisenhower because we don't want to split, you know, a brother or a sister for someone who's, let's say, in the second grade. So we're going to try to get about thirty, forty kids that would normally go to Eisenhower. We've done this in the past, right, Ms. Ogleman? We've done this already.
Yes, we have.
So this is nothing new. So we will look at that, there's no doubt about that. But again, the question is, will we have teachers to fill up those open classrooms? By that I mean, are we going to have, for every new teacher, approximately fifty-five thousand dollars more than what we put appropriate? Last year, we actually spent less mon, less money. Our appropriation has gone down. That's the first time, really, in thirty-three years that I've been in education, that the appropriation has fell, has decreased in amount of salaries, just to give you an idea what's happening. I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. If I did, I'd maybe a hedge hunter, I don't know, hedge fund person. But I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what our, our state aid is going to be next year. Right now, we're approximately three million dollars we have to generate in, in fund balance and surplus from this budget just to fill the hole. We approximately get seventeen million dollars in state aid. Subsequently, if we get seventeen million dollars next year, we'll be sitting pretty, better than we were last year when we lost four million, five million, not to mention what happened, budget failed, we lost another million. That's, that also was a killer. You know, we, we weathered the storm, we due to two percent, we deal with the cap, and then the budget fails. And last year, we lost about a mil, a little over a million dollars when the budget failed and it went to the mayor and council. It's just the fact of life in this town. Unfortunately, that's it. If this budget fails, nothing that we're going to do is going to help us because we're not going to have the money. We'll have open classrooms, but we won't have people to put in them. And I'm just being honest with you. And there's nothing more than I would like to do than to resolve this issue and to reduce the class sizes. But class sizes are not just high at Eisenhower, they're starting to creep up throughout the district in certain areas because we're just not adding any staff. I mean, thank God, because there are other districts that lost a hundred to a hundred and fifty staff, or lost ten, fifteen, twenty percent of their teaching staff. So I, and we're going to, we're going to do exactly what you're saying, and if we can open up and ease some of the overcrowding, we will. But Eisenhower seems to be the focal point. That seems to be the building that we're really taking a look at. And who knows? I mean, the kindergarten numbers, he'll tell you, they go up twenty-five, fifty kids a year, or they go down twenty-five to fifty students a year. So it's very, you know, the fluctuation rate can be, you know, it can really go up and down by quite a large number, and we're transient. We do about twenty to twenty-five percent a year. So that means the number of kids that start at the beginning of the year, you could lose fifty and gain fifty. So, you know, we're, we're, we're pretty mobile.
Let me add, Allison, then, when we started this endeavor-
Thank you.
-we made a couple assumptions. Number one, the board wants to maintain full-day kindergarten. And doing that, and I understand that locally, we're about the only district that has full-day kindergarten. So we're concerned and we'll keep an eye on those numbers that they don't spike up because people are bringing their kids here to go to kindergarten, but they don't live. So we're, we're watching that. The other assumption is that whatever we do, especially redistrict, there's going to be people that don't have. We went in there, whatever we do, we took that as an assumption. But I think, again, I mentioned earlier about making business decisions, it's hard to justify not redistricting when you have some schools that have room. But I think, again, I mentioned earlier about making business decisions. It's hard to justify not redistricting when you have some schools that have room. Uh, but then again, Dr. Farno's point is too, that we wanna put the students in those rooms, but we need to put a teacher in front of them. Um, and that's the other issue that we're, we're talking about. Obviously, it's gonna be a high priority budget issue for the board to take a look at because class size is something that we're all concerned with. But I think in the meantime, the, the redistricting and, and the teachers on the card issue, we'll solve it in the near time until we get the demographic study done to really get a hard look on what our numbers are.
I mean, you know, if my child's gonna be in a classroom with twenty-five children and nineteen, it, you know, it's...
It's a big...
And it's, you know, any teacher will tell you, one or two children, they would fall with your children being upset on any given day. It just makes the numbers easier.
Sure, and I have elementary school teachers here, those will tell you the same thing, sure. Absolutely that, and we're interested in it.
I mean, you know, if, if it means my child being in a classroom with nineteen, I'd set them wherever they need to be because in the end, they're all together in one place.
And I think most people will see that. Absolutely. Okay. But we wanna make sure that the sibling thing is an issue for us too. Looking at, you know, who gets on the buses where and who goes where as we keep families together. So it's a lot more involved than we initially thought when we started to take a look at it. But we're, we're pressing on. I know there's a couple of other questions on this issue only, then we're gonna press on with the agenda. Mrs. Kilcomby, she had to hand it to her.
I know that Arlet School, rather, Wilson School drops, but correct me if I'm wrong, Town Lake isn't completed. And with its whole potential, I'm sure those students would be going to Wilson School.
Yeah, I, I don't have the numbers from Town Lake, and I was gonna request that because it was a planning board issue. We don't get as many students out of Town Lake into our school district as I had it for. Uh, and the other area of Town Lake is, it, it's in litigation right now, so we don't know what's gonna wind up there.
It may not be seniors, but maybe...
Right, yeah, absolutely. And it's meeting that way.
And is Samso completely full? Or is there a wing? Is there...
There's room, Samso.
Rumors that it's not completely filled.
Uh, Samso's not full, filled. Now, it has about, let's say about ten classrooms left open. So that's all part of this study. That's, again, once again, Mrs. Kilcomby's, even if you have open classrooms, if you don't have the people to put in those classrooms, it doesn't really matter. And you can't do it disjointedly. This is something that was brought up, well, maybe we put half of the third grade into Samso Upper Elementary School, and that was basically...
Rolled out.
Rolled out by the elementary principals unanimously. So that is like the worst thing you could do, split up the third grade.
With passion, I might add.
And, you know, we're, again, we're looking at everything, everything that you're saying, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to make, you know, trying to make the easiest and cost most cost effective. I, I, I think about ten grand, between five and 10,000. I could be wrong, but I'm not sure.
Maybe we're doing...
I haven't, I haven't done one, Mrs. Kilcomby's, in, like I said, fifteen, twenty years, so I wouldn't even know. You don't do them that often. You do them, maybe one every ten or fifteen years.
And the board's doing this the right way. We're talking to elementary school people who have the most at stake here, the most knowledgeable, and we're taking their counsel on this, as well as we're looking at the budgetary things and immediate remedies to the situation. So more to follow, Allison, as we continue to press on, we'll keep you updated. Mrs. Pinto, you had to hand it up.
I have a question. With all the redistricting that goes through, that means five child coming up in like, probably two years, there's a chance she won't go to Arlet because she ran around the corner, that she'll have to go to another school?
I, I don't know of that particular case. I mean, the demographic study will give us a clearer picture of that. We're gonna try our best to keep people that are that close to the school.
Uh, Mr. Pinto, probably not. We, we try to isolate areas that, right now, we're pulling, there's maybe three or four, an area where they're pulled, like, down by railroad tracks where we pull the kids up from that area, that there's really no home district. So we kinda redistrict those areas down there. But, you know, we're gonna take a close look at everything. And I can't answer your question because I don't really know how we would chop it up and how we would redistrict it.
Well, this is something we'll continue to update at, at meetings as we get more information. And I think the board, the question of the board at hand, and we'll, we'll talk about it in discussions, so we can plus on the agenda, whether we want to authorize a demographic study, it seems like. Let's, let's talk about it and get to discussion. Uh, Mr. McEnroe, I was just going to ask, Mr. DeAndrea, could you get ahold of somebody from Maintenance now that they can turn the air conditioning off in this building? We've had an issue with this for the last two meetings. You know, it's getting a little ridiculous, right?
Is it on?
It's, I don't think it's air conditioning, it's pulling in fresh air from outside. It's keeping me awake, that I've not had to get coffee yet, so. Alright, let's, um, at this point, guys, let's press on to the agenda. We'll open up the board again. I lost track of four Mr. Connors.
Correspondents.
I move the correspondence to be received and filed.
Uh, taking another motion. Well, we don't need to go to that. Uh, rule the minutes. Everybody should've got the minutes from November sixteenth, plus the addition, change to them. If anybody have any questions, deletions, changes on the minutes.
You need to do a first and a second before you open up.
I make a motion that the minutes in November sixteenth be approved.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, question.
Hey, Dan, is there any way you can check the problem with the cafeteria? It's kind of cold in here. We're in the middle of the meeting, as you can see, alright?
I did push it up, Randy at the next meeting.
Hot chocolate from five, hot chocolate.
Well, we have a question on it before we...
Okay, the, um, well, the first thing, on the first page where it said, um, personnel, rate of pay, substitute bus drivers, we didn't discuss that close session, we discussed that open?
Yeah, you did also discuss it in, it brought it.
No, we didn't discuss it, we pulled it out.
We pulled it, because we decided it wasn't closed.
We said, it started in there, that's why it's included.
We started and said it's best...
But I included it because that's where it started.
It's in, it's in the open.
Right, well, we didn't discuss it in close. I guess it was, it was up in closed and then...
Did you put a noting in the closed minutes that we moved it to public because it wasn't closed?
Next. Put the air conditioning back on.
In the back, where I know you said there was a revised one today where we discussed the attorney, and you said there was a revision? And the revision Jill said was just her comments?
No, I am, it was just mine, and mine was one of them.
Right, Mr. Syax came through on Friday, and Mrs. Trapp's came through today.
Okay, the comments that you included in there, whatevers they were, you pulled them from the meeting or people said they wanted them?
Those are the ones that the individuals sent me that they wished to have added.
So they sent you what they wanted added?
Yes.
We were requested to send what we wanted added.
But how do we know that's what we said at the meeting?
Well, that wasn't my question, but that's a good question. Well, because there was one thing that was in here that I, I actually have issue with, I don't remember who said it at the meeting. But I think if we're gonna do that, I, I think we need to include everybody's comments and not just one or two people's.
And I, what I'll do is explain to a board member that question to me early. I, I learned early in my career that when board members start going at each other, it's best that I stay away from trying to paraphrase or include in the comments what each board member said, because early in my career, all it takes is a misstatement of one person's word, and all of the hostility amongst the board was then focused on me.
Or revision.
So if any board member was...
But you didn't follow that rule, correct?
I did. I, the first version that was out was my ver, uh, the summary of what had transpired. And as board members got those minutes, they then forwarded to me what they believed they wanted included, and I obliged their request, as I've done in the past with any board member who has either here or prior to here said, I wish to have these included in the minutes. Uh, so it's a practice that I've always followed, and that's, I knew this was gonna happen with this one particularly. And I, I specifically said to Mr. Syak, please review the minutes. I know they're brief, they're summarized, and I know you'll have it, uh, inclusion on them, which he did. And then Mrs. Trapp seen them, she added additional items. I know Mrs. Esposito called me, several people have called me. And at that point, what I do is accept what they felt is their interpretation of what we said at those meetings.
So would it be okay if we all did that? Is that the answer to this?
If, if that's what the board desires, I'd have no problem.
The one I have, I didn't, I didn't see your original one. I guess the one I had must've been the first revision. The one I have has Kevin Syak's in it, and then you said there was a revision just...
First one went out Thursday to Friday, and early this morning, so there've been three revisions on it.
Okay, so what do we have now? We have Kevin Syak and Jill.
And Mrs. Trapp.
So there's only two in there?
Right, those were the revisions.
I thought it was okay that mine was not put in. I was okay with mine having that.
Well, I don't, I'm not okay, actually, because either it should be everybody or nobody. I, I mean, I know you don't care if yours is in there, but I don't really think...
I have no problem with then just, those members who wish to have more included, I, I just ask that you send it so that the onus is not upon me to put dictation as to what every board member said to, so I'm not caught of missing one person's word of a simple...
Right, I understand that, but then it's really not minutes, then, if we're just gonna email you what we want in the minutes.
Again, the board wishes to have minutes dedicated.
Let me take my two cents of this. Cracker Wong, isn't this young man being paid to record this?
Yes, it is.
Is it not a form of meeting minutes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, next issue.
Okay, so I would like to have my comments put in.
Uh, please forward them to me and I'll...
Okay, and I, I did have a question on one of the comments that was in there, if we can... Well, I have the first one, it's on page fifteen, I don't know if it makes sense on the same. The one thing I did wanna talk about, and this goes back to the way the process was done, and I only have Kevin Syak's, and I don't have the other one. So I didn't read the rest of it. It says, um, a few board members...
You recorded it in your packet, I would say.
I know, it was here today, but I, I didn't get to read it. So I'm just gonna comment on what I've already read. It said, "A few board members met with Mr. Bush at the school board conference. The rest of us were informed an interview was scheduled." I don't know if that was exactly said at the last meeting, but, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McEnroe, but...
My pleasure.
The, um, interview that was scheduled was an email that we received from you, correct?
Correct.
Okay. This implies that there was, um, an interview scheduled by some people and not by others, which wasn't really the case, that the interview was scheduled via the email that I believe we all got at the same time.
Correct.
Correct. So I don't know if this was said at the last meeting, but it's, it's not accurate in, in the process and how it went. So am I supposed to send my opinion on, if I send my comments, do I include that as...
I, I have no, I have no problem, if you wish to clarify, that the board was informed that an interview was scheduled so that it doesn't make it appear that the board members that met with Mr. Bush at the conference...
I remember getting that, that there was really an interview with Mr. Bush at the conference.
No, 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 there wasn't. There wasn't an email that was issued, uh, being an, an interview of Mr. Bush at the conference. Some, some board members met with Mr. Bush at the conference.
No, my board members didn't. We were at the conference, and Mr. Bush approached us, gave us his card from his new law firm, said, "I'd like to make a proposal to the board for our new law firm." That's when I sent the email out there, but he's saying that Mr. Bush represents his new law firm, uh, is gonna come to the next board meeting and give us a presentation. That, that's the way it happened. Nobody met with him. Uh, it was just a social event, and he came around handing out cards. I know I was there, Phyllis was there, Jill, Helen. That's how they...
Alright, um, if you don't have a problem, then if no one has a problem, I'd like to send my comments, and I encourage anybody else to send theirs too.
Then at this point, what I suggest to the board is...
Table the minutes.
Let's withdraw the minutes.
Okay, withdraw.
And what I'll do is I'll put the additional comments, I'll forward it back to the board. Uh, and at this point, what I'm, I'm gonna do before the next board meeting is ask that all board members reply that you have read the minutes and that you have no additional comments so that we can close this, uh, close these minutes.
Okay, is that what we should do always?
Generally, that's why we send everything home, that if board members have comments or concerns, the, they are to contact us so we can make revisions on not only minutes, but on any items, so that we can address them in a sufficient manner, so that we can get...
Well, let that be a matter of practice now, when you get the, when they post them to the portal and you see them, if you have any concerns, let the board secretary know, and hopefully they can be corrected.
And, and I can appreciate what Emilio's saying, that he would, there would be an, an extra twenty-five pages if he quoted what everybody had said, or discussed for the hour, or...
I think that's why we videotaped.
Right, so I, and that's fine, either, it should either be, and I'm okay with you not putting them all in, I understand your point, that that's a fairer way to do it.
So, the minutes, the many minutes have been taken. Mr. O'Connor, I apologize for the lengthy, I'm sure you have homework that needs to get done.
That's fine.
Student council representative, what, what's happening around campus?
The students are thrilled about the Bombers and Vulcans victory over Brick Memorial this past Saturday, playing the state championships. The students are also proud of all of our other, uh, fall sports who have been very successful this year as well. We're looking forward to our winter sports.
Good, excellent, state champions, Central Missouri Division Four, outstanding. Thank you, sir. You, you can go if you need to.
Yeah.
He's had it up wrong.
You can sign your pass. A parent involvement representative says, "Ms. Charlene June, I miss you, happens to be here."
We had no need.
I did, but we had no need.
Okay, she wants to say anything? Okay. Alright, let's press on. You got any highlights there of Mr. Vice President?
A, a few, yes, we do, Mr. President. On Friday, November twelfth, Arlet Elementary School donated 560 items to the Saverville Care and Share Food Bank. These donations will go to help the hungry families of Saverville. Special thanks to the SUES ambassadors for picking up the food and delivering it to the food bank. With the holiday season fondness, the students, families, and staff of Arlet Elementary School continued on their mission of giving. Once again, they have shown how much they care by collecting leftover Halloween candy to send to our troops who will be overseas for the holidays. They were able to collect over a hundred and fifty pounds of candy to send to our soldiers. Now the soldiers overseas who have to celebrate the holidays without their families will have a sweet surprise. Congratulations to the district's own Mrs. Barbara DeSantis, integrated technology teacher for the district for being elected president of New Jersey Science Teachers Association. Mrs. DeSantis had previously served as the editor of the NJSTA newsletter and as a member of the executive board. Her term runs from November twenty-eleventh through October twenty-twelve. She is a fine example of caring and dedication for our Saverville school's family. Tips the season of giving, and the Saverville Middle School just keeps giving. Mrs. Pamela Chartok chaired the Class Act Committee's annual Thanksgiving food drive, which ran from October twelve through November twelve in conjunction with the Samso Upper Elementary School and several of the district's elementary schools. Along with the cooperation and commitment of the entire staff at the middle school, and through posters, flyers, and announcements, the middle school family collected non-perishable food items and cash donations to benefit the Saverville Care and Share Food Bank and the OLB St. Vincent de Paul Society. Overall, the middle school collected 1,679 non-perishable food items and over $656 in cash. Despite the difficult economic times, this was the most successful food drive in the past several years. We are all very proud of the efforts of the Saverville Middle Schools civic-minded and dedicated students and staff in this worthwhile endeavor. That concludes our notes.
More good news from Arlet. I'm just gonna see a trend, you know. Very good. Dr. Alphano, please, very briefly, bring us to your report.
That concludes my report.
Very good.
Amen.
Uh, section A, there's no report. Section B are our regular resolutions through finance. Any questions with section B, one through ten? With none, moving to C, personnel non-certified. Page four, there's a resignation, an unpaid medical leave, um, a black seal stipend, transfer of paraprofessionals, some professional days, and a small stipend for Ms. Janikowski. Uh, page, uh, number seven, page five, are, uh, uh, some, uh, employment of personnel. And number eight is our substitute list for non-certificated individuals. Any questions with section C?
I have a question. What is, what is that enterprise account tuition? What is it?
Those are the, that's the account that now handles our tuition programs. Remember, we don't have the Saverville Adult School anymore. We simply have preschool tuition programs. We have the SA, two SAT classes, and we have the, um, preschool tuition programs. Preschool enrichment and SAT. It's only those three programs with very small classes.
And we will be incorporating that within the, um, the business office, that will not, you will not see that stipend anymore. This is it, after this semester. We'll, we'll assume those responsibilities. A D, personnel certified, you have an unpaid medical leave, um, jock coach, which again, you remember that's for the, uh, the youngster with the basketball team. Evening parent programs, which is part of our Title One, Title Three funds. Uh, number four, which is on page seven, is our professional day list, and that runs to page eight. Unpaid coaching aide, and the approval of employment of one individual. And number seven, uh, update to our substitute list, any questions with section D? With none, moving to E, policy, no report. F, are some placements that are evident on page nine. Some services on page ten. Number three are some title changes on page ten as well. Um, you'll see the, uh, the course, and it's what it's changed to, trying to make it a little bit more interesting for, um, young high school students. Uh, number four are two new courses, algebra applications and economics and financial literacy. Early dismissal schedule for January twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth for the midterm exams for the high school. Any questions with this? Any questions with this section?
Question, could you, what is algebra application?
That's a class that's designed as a second year of algebra for certain students who may want to take a fourth year of math, but really aren't quite ready for Algebra Two. And what's been happening is they've been going into some of the other classes that they're really not well-suited for. This would not need additional teachers, it would be simply probably two sections, Mr. President assumes, and it would take students out of other sections, other math classes. And this would be something that would be particularly well-suited for students who do need the fourth year of math, and maybe you're going to middlesex or to one of the community colleges.
Any other questions? With none, moving to G, curriculum. Some cheerleading competitions, payment for the transportation, page eleven, boys soccer, teen banquet, middle school PTO sponsored care night, Eisenhower Elementary School movie night, camp out. Haven't really made that one, just stayed all night.
If any board members want to go, any of those banquets, just go ahead and coordinate with Mr. DeAndrea.
Okay, girls field hockey, same thing, banquet. Any questions with section G?
Do you have a date for that PTO care night, January twenty?
January twenty eighth, that was supposed to be put in, and it wasn't.
Well, I don't know, it's on the screen there, okay.
Yeah, it's January twenty eighth, it's in there. Moving to H, support services, some changes in transportation routes, and sixteen field trips. Moving to page thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and one additional SUES, or a number of SUES trips to the Saverville Historical Society. There was about eight or ten different trips. Moving to the, any questions with that section? Moving to the addendum, I think it's two pages, there is an additional resolution on finance, stipulation of settlements, this is RSC. I know, Mr. DeAndrea, we would like, you want to take a separate vote on this, Mr. Mackinon?
No, I don't need to.
We can wait till the end, okay. Personnel non-certified, number eight, a couple of additional substitutes. D, a few more professional day approvals. Six is an additional teacher to be employed on the second page. Eight, again, is Board of Education contractual retirement of Mr. Wallace. An addition of a Class Five substitute, which is Mr. Bell. The reason we're doing that is we're running out of substitutes for some of the principals. For whatever reason, a few of our substitutes have either gotten sick, or they're not available, and we have a long-term illness, and I want to wish Ms. Bowman very well, she broke her wrist, and they put pins in it, so she's going to be out for at least six weeks. So, we're kind of falling behind, so Mr. Bell said he would be willing to do it. So, if you want to like to send her, get well, Ms. Bowman will be home until probably beginning of January.
Dr. Alfonso, one question, what is Mr. Bell or substitute people...
Two thirty.
Two thirty a day?
Yes, they're a little above the level four. That's a good question. F, curriculum, we have an additional kindergarten student, by law, we have to put that student through a resolution. G, Saverville Middle School chorus will be singing in holiday carols at the Reflections housing development. Finally, I would like to congratulate the Bombers football team, it's the first one I've had in thirty-three years as a state champion. As a matter of fact, any of the big ones, as I call basketball, baseball, football, wrestling, that's the first one I've had, and they've done, they did an excellent job. But I, Mr. Mackinon, I want you to know, Mr. DeAndrea and I were ready to go in with all those injuries. I was ready to do a little running back, but they didn't call me, but thank God they didn't. But it was warm down on the field, I'll tell you.
We noticed you on the sidelines.
Yes, Mr. DeAndrea called me to Michelin Man, because I had so many sweatshirts on, and I couldn't move.
He was actually taking his hard work this night.
I wouldn't even eat shoulder pads that night.
There's many, many of the board members were in attendance, and I think that's what impressed me the most about that game. The BA from the town, several council people were there, the support, when we looked at the brick side, I would think brick probably had maybe four hundred people, I think Sable had probably close to two thousand. It was just a great thing to see the town support when they came back, the fire trucks and police, I mean, this was really a real great moment, to see the town get together for something that really put Sable in good light.
It's what it's about, smart boards, and football.
At least it's in the...
Now that I think about it, I would have liked to see you and Mr. DeAndrea on the football.
I can take it.
Short yardage. Okay, where are we at? Are we done?
I'm finished.
Okay, any board discussion on the agenda before I open up the public? Hearing none, at this time, I'd like to open up the public for any questions, comments, you have an agenda, mindless only, please be mindful, I will open up to the public for any business that may come properly before this board. At this time, anybody from the public, if not all close to the public, I will entertain a motion to accept and file the superintendent's report. So, who?
Second.
Any motion in the second, you roll call vote, please. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, except, I'm staying on item B three and no on item eleven.
Why did I...
B three is the treasurer's report. Eleven is the RSC settlement.
You're abstaining on votes, sir?
I'm abstaining on one, voting no on the other.
Okay, thank you. What number is the first, please, again? Eleven. Eleven on the table. Mrs. Backdon?
I'll be voting no on B eleven.
Mr. Bishaba?
I'll be voting no on B eleven, the settlement with the RSC architects, and yes, on the rest of the agenda.
Mrs. Bruno Rattulian?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lemba?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon? Yes, and no exceptions. Moving right along, background information, discussion, discussion. I just want to mention that, as you know, the Curriculum Committee, a while back, had asked that the high school administration do a study, looking at possible change in the schedule to make more academic flexibility. Mr. Brown briefed the Curriculum Committee sometime last week, and he wasn't accompanying the meeting, but he had a family emergency, so I will speak with him through Dr. Alfonso, if he can come in a subsequent meeting and brief in more detail. But the bottom line, his committee had made a couple of recommendations, and one of them was, the scheduling committee strongly recommends elimination of early dismissal options for seniors. I personally support that a hundred percent, I fought those battles in my own home. Also, he wants to increase the graduation requirements from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty credits for graduation. He wants to increase the opportunity to take electives, meaning that if we're going to increase the academic requirement and keep seniors there, we want to give them valuable elective courses as well. It was a consensus for the committee that a modified block schedule could provide additional academic benefits, without the significant financial impact of the total block schedule. And lastly, in event we did go to a block schedule, we believe that the EB block would be advantageous, but would like the opportunity to collaborate with the entire staff before making the final decision. This is the lengthy analysis that Mr. Brown and his committee did, I think it was very well-done. It was, and I mentioned at the meeting, the most productive meeting in committee that I've had since I've been on the board of it. And I think this is what we need to be taking a look at, and I think in a subsequent meeting, Mr. Brown could come back. I don't want to entertain a lot of discussion now, because he has more of the background information on why he's recommending these things, but I think these were all good suggestions, and I think the majority of the board, if not the entire board, would agree with him.
Can I, can I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
You had mentioned early, the elimination of early dismissals of seniors. He was probably, he's going to delay that, it's not like it's going to start next year, he was saying that most likely it will start for the incoming eighth graders.
And he will brief them, and he will call the middle school parents together.
A deluge of sophomores, juniors, freshmen.
Yes, he did, yeah. Yeah, I know, he's going to be next meeting, he could be here tonight, so. Good, so that's some good stuff happening.
Mr. Mackinon?
Under curriculum? Yeah.
Curriculum Committee, one of the issues that bothered me, as a parent of students here in the system, there's a class called Earth Science, which is basically a freshman class. What happened is pertaining to one of my sons before graduation. One of the colleges that he applied to required three labs, and he figured three sciences were good enough, and to get into this one particular school at the time, he was not allowed, he had, they recommended that he take a summer course to go to another school to acquire the third lab. What I was going to ask is maybe our guidance department, with our freshman coming in, for them to kind of guess, or start looking at a school of choice such, I'll give you an example, the University of South Carolina declined his application because they didn't consider Earth Science as an acceptable lab for admission to that college. The point that I'm trying to make is that it's not.
It's not.
No. It's not a lab science. Correct. What I'm saying is, some of the schools through, are requiring a minimum of three lab sciences through the lab department. And I think that's all wrapped into the scheduling, and the block scheduling gives them more flexibility to do that.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, he addressed those things, yeah.
This could be a combination for our guidance department to look into also, to advise incoming students, either in their freshman or sophomore year, what they are going to need to go to one particular school.
Miss, like... Earth Science, as it is now, is not, Earth Science is not a lab science, and it's presented to students, it's not a freshman class. We have, right now, we have general science, which is a lab science, which is for freshmen. Every high school student is required to take biology, which is a lab science.
Chemistry.
And chemistry. They're not actually required to take chemistry, some students opt to take Earth Science in place of chemistry. But we're exploring some different options with changing around the science curriculum and possibly offering something different to, to the freshmen, something more specific, actually physics-type of course, as freshmen, and that is one of the things that we are exploring for students.
Tom, looking at physics first concept, teaching physics at the ninth grade, and we understand your concern. And again, I think Mr. Brown's presentation covers all those things, what he needs is more flexibility in his scheduling and building, and I think this will make that happen, a part of the plan.
And as the high school graduation requirements by the state have been increased, we really don't have a choice as far as offering Earth Science as one of the lab sciences. You know, very few students, a lot of students are taking that perhaps in place of physics in those cases. At this point, going back a number of years ago, there wasn't necessarily much of a genetic system.
The other issue that I was going to ask for the committee to look at, is maybe some of the math classes that are offered to our freshmen, such as Algebra One, maybe could be looked at going into the eighth grade at the middle school. That way, when our students come into the high school that they have required...
We incorporate that, we incorporate that, okay. This is September.
Algebra One has been up in the middle school for years.
It has been, Algebra One has been offered in the eighth grade to our top students. However, we, this current eighth grade class, we, most of the students in eighth grade are taking Algebra, whether it's Algebra, full-year Algebra One, or Algebra One A.
I remember this.
So, they take it over two years. The vast majority of our students are taking either Algebra One A or Algebra in eighth grade, and those, the number that is taking Algebra One, the full-year course at eighth grade, has increased significantly from in the past.
And that was what the Curriculum Committee discussed last year, implemented in September. So, good stuff's happened in the curriculum, and that's what this board should be having this conversation about this, so good stuff. Mr. Syak, the delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association?
I'll be brief, I attended the delegate assembly, and the delegate assembly adopted new language regarding cases where students attend local public schools and reside in tax-exempt housing at a non-public school or independent institution of higher education. And basically, what they said is, by way of a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot, the non-public school or independent institution of higher education should pay directly to the local school district, the fee equivalent to the established tuition rates.
What's that mean?
If you have a student that, for example, lives on campus, in Scadaway, at Rutgers University, with a...
They don't contribute to the Scadaway School District.
Correct, so therefore, there should be a law in place that allows payment, a payment in lieu of taxes arrangement, so that the money goes directly to the local school district.
And they asking for us to support them in that?
It's already been voted on and approved. I asked the board at the last meeting if how they wanted me to vote, it was approved one hundred to twenty-seven.
What are you hearing out of Trenton, as far as the school board elections being moved to November, capping...
The latest news that I heard on the school board elections being moved to November is that it's once again picking up steam, at least among discussion and committee with the legislature, and there's been a new variant of that proposal that is now being talked about, which is moving the school board elections to November, together with the general election. And if your budget is under a one percent increase in local tax levy, you'll be exempt from the school budget vote. If however, it's between one percent and a two percent increase in the local tax levy, keeping in mind that two percent is the new cap, you will still be required to go before the voters. That's the latest rumor that I heard, what's being talked about. Now, how that's going to work logistically, with a school board election being held in, let's say, three or four weeks ago, in our case, for the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year, which doesn't start until July one, for budgetary planning purposes, I'm not sure. But that's one of the options that's being discussed.
Maybe he'll give us five percent more, so kind of, you know...
Sure he will.
Hold this over until November.
But the big talk following the delegates' assembly was the cap discussion about, you know, how to handle the two percent cap, the fact that there are very few exemptions for the two percent cap, and that it's going to be a struggle for boards to live within that, that means.
What are the exemptions?
There's pensions and...
Pension and health benefits, but it's not the entire pension or the entire health benefits, it's basically the amount that would extend beyond the two percent increase.
Any, any, any good news coming out of it?
From Trenton?
Yeah.
No. I have questions, that's the end.
Under discussion, Home News Tribune article, People's Toolkit, who's got that?
I do. At the last meeting, there was a mention to the Home News Tribune article. On the following morning, I sent to the board, all indicate, everything indicated in that article, our procedures that we currently follow for many years in this district, we do solicit. Our consultant does go out and provide us with quotations from various different carriers on all our medical insurance. They do disclose how much their fees are in their proposals, or things that are part of the toolkit. One thing that is indicated in the toolkit is going through the state health benefits, and for those individuals who sit on the negotiations committee, know that is not something that can just be done unilaterally, it has to be done through the negotiations process. So, I sent to the board, so that you do know that although they make recommendations, we really do not need them, because these are procedures and practices that this board has followed for many years. And then, the question was, how, the things that are going on in other districts, the only thing that I can assure this board of, is the integrity and honesty of not only myself, but all the administrators in this district, that things of this nature will not happen in this district. Other than that, that's the only assurance I can give here.
What about the New Jersey School Board Association insurance carrier? Do we...
We solicit them, and Mr. Syak, as I mentioned in that last meeting, he specifically called me, because he was a member at that time of that school board, or the insurance group, and their quotations were not below the safe quotations. But we are soliciting everywhere we can.
Do we solicit them every year? Do we look into it every year?
No, because your insurance property casualty is a two- to three-year program, and your insurance is yearly.
We went with that about three years ago, I believe, for our student accident insurance, because it was lower than the upper floor premiums. Workman's comp, they've never been able to compete on, because unfortunately, our Workman's comp experience rating is not good.
Right.
And what about health?
They do have to health.
They don't.
They don't.
Two thousand and eleven, twelve budget. Give us some good news.
No, can't help you with that. At this point in time, the administration has developed and submitted their budget to the, to the central office. At this point in time, as we said this evening, the current budget as presented by the administration is two point five million dollars above the two percent tax levy cap. That does not include any capital project at this point in time. The Buildings and Grounds Committee has met earlier today, they have given direction as to some projects they would like to look at. The goal is, is that we have set aside one point two million in capital reserve, the goal will be to try and do one point two million dollars in capital projects, which will not increase the tax levy. So, basically, at this point in time, we are currently sitting at about two point five million dollars above the two percent cap, but, and this is the big but, we are currently at two point five, assuming that all state aid is flat. Any reduction in state aid is going to bring that deficit of two point five to a greater number. So, at this point in time, we are starting at flat funding, and as news comes out of the... So at this point in time, we are starting at flat funding, and as news comes out of Trenton, we will make the adjustments accordingly in those areas. The goal will be for the December twenty-first meeting, the board will be given all of the backup supporting documentations to the budget, salary projections or salary forecasts, including the budget with justifications, so that you have the holiday break to start looking at it, and then hopefully at that point in time, at that point in time we can then start scheduling whatever appropriate meetings the board wishes to have with the public or amongst themselves, so we have sufficient time to move forward with the development of your...
Another issue, and I like what we did last year, the way we ran the budget, and as soon as we start talking about that, the better. But is it still going to happen where we establish our budget, then we find out what the state aid is?
Unfortunately, yes.
So I, you know, what's the point of, I just don't get it.
I have a question. When we prepare a budget with a two percent cap and we include that one point two million, if the budget fails and it goes for cuts, is that one point two million out for cuts as well?
My understanding at this point in time, no, because it must, the capital reserve can only be used for capital projects. That's why it's specifically being set aside for capital projects.
Okay, but could it be, could they, or would it be legal to say, well, we'll cut the one point two down and put it back in the reserve?
Well, they can put it back in the reserve, but then they have to cancel a project also. That's my understanding.
What if you put it back in the reserve, would it lower the two percent?
No, one has nothing to do with the other. And that was the strategy, that's why we use that strategy at the year end, to, to at least put that money aside.
Lastly, what's the status of the solar project?
At this point in time, we, we are still waiting on numbers from the state, so that our timeline is now relaxed, we are looking at an April referendum at this point in time. The Building and Grounds Committee also agreed this evening for, for myself to sit with Mr. Joe DeCara and put together some type of proposal to possibly at least prepare the bid specifications for the roof replacements at some cost, where they, they would bear some of the cost, some risk with us, at some fee, to come back to the full board and present. So that when the referendum goes out and passes in April, we can then immediately go out and put out at least the roofing bid specs in early May, award league mains hopefully still have roofs prepared and replaced in the summer.
Mr. Bishada, Ms. Bruno Rattul brought up points about the work orders, it seems like they've been on there for a long time, but it's a leaky, was that addressed at all to Building and Grounds Committee today?
No, that wasn't addressed today, but of course, our Building and Ground Supervisor has a training process going on with the new person with the HVAC, he's kind of swunk, to be perfectly honest, with the meeting that we had this evening, but hopefully that he will be caught up.
Well, all of the roof leaks was addressed, we're on, if I could just, we're on our second contractor at this point in time for repairs to the roofs, we hired someone, I believe somewhere in July and August, or I may, may have been earlier than that, who never fulfilled the obligation, we have now, since then, solicited another contractor who has made promises to come in and repair some of the roofs. So we're on our second try, if he has a deadline of this week, if not, we're going to try a third contractor, the unfortunate part is roofers are really not in the business of repairing roofs, they like to replace them.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
The concerns that I raised were not about roof leaks, they were about leaks in the bathrooms, especially at Arlet, that were on the work orders from September. So I didn't read everything in detail, but in glancing over everything, I felt that that presented a safety hazard to the children, it wasn't the roofs, and it was lighting as well, that light bulbs weren't replaced, and that work orders were in from September.
Yes. The goal along was what, is, is, we have one leaking for months?
Well, that's, that was my question, was what's going on?
And I spoke to Mr. Pateliano, and as Mr. Bishada indicated, with the amount of things that we have going on, we were, if you recall, we were shorthanded one maintenance person, and, and the other day we had a maintenance person go out, and he had a light fixture, a ten pound light fixture fall on his head, which wound up to be a saving grace, because wound up in the doctor's office next, next day and found out he had, he was possibly going to have a heart attack, that could have been deadly, he had a hundred percent blockage on one side and eighty percent on the other, so a light falling on his head, so unfortunately at this time, we're down three people on maintenance.
I know Mr. Pateliano was anxious to get this construction over so he can concentrate on our existing infrastructure, so...
Which he is.
I have a question, back to the solar, is there any indication that this will not happen in April, that this could be even pushed further?
The only thing that it's not going to happen is that we don't get any funding from the state, and at this point, no one has any clue as to what the governor's going to do with state funding, as far as debt service, what percentage. I can tell you the School Development Authority, they've had paperwork for reimbursement on this high school probably for two to three months now, and have not received any of that. I have six other projects that have been submitted for more than two months, the person has told me has left their desk and has been put in for reimbursement, but we're not seeing the money come out, so obviously there are situations down at the state level that they are not releasing any type of information, and I've gone to our bond attorney and our architect to try and get information, and it's mums the word down there.
NCLB too, you haven't gotten our NCLB one?
Yes.
They're not going to commit to any funds.
At this point in time, no.
So we can't do this until we have a commitment?
Absolutely, true.
Well, the big part of the solar savings was based on the referendum, the savings that was generated by debt service. Now obviously, if I recall the numbers correctly, we may be able to do solar without debt service, but then you're short on the money, the eight million dollars to do the roofing.
I have a question to follow up on Collins, and there's a few people that are out now, a few maintenance men?
Right now, I'm down three, I'm probably down to one now.
Okay, you mean, down to one person working?
No, sit, no.
One person's down. So are the others working overtime, or do we have a substitution?
At this point in time, no, they're, they're just putting in their regular work day, we're trying to control overtime costs also. Waiting for the winter to come in.
Maintenance workers? No.
If I'm correct, Mr. DeAndrea, our janitors are supposed to be able and have the ability to change light bulbs, am I correct?
Yes, this was more than, what happened to the gentleman was more than a light bulb.
No, 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 she don't, that was part of the work order, some of the work orders were...
They should be able, again, depending on the consensus we came to when we did those new job descriptions, if I recall correctly, they would not climb any ladder over six feet high, that would be left for maintenance. So we had some criterias put in there, so that maintenance, maintenance would do, high climbing, custodians weren't, that was one of the criterias to settle the job description.
So do we have like maybe a thousand or two thousand dollars that we could find to put some overtime into that, so the guys can work it?
If the board is...
And if this is done?
If the board directed me to, to start issuing overtime and to get some of these work orders done and over with, I'd be more than happy to do that and pass that message on to Mr. Pateliano to stop resolving some of these issues, yes, I have no problem with that.
I would support that, is that be frustrating if I principal the building, you know, and I got a light out for two months and the water's leaking, I mean...
If it's a desire of the board, I'd be more than happy to tell them to try and re, to give, offer the overtime to get some of these older work orders done and over with, yes.
Anybody disagree with that?
Beat down their neck so they get as much done.
At least the safety issues, like the leaking water.
Well, I'll be well, I'll see with Mr. Pateliano to try to get some of those older items out of the way.
I think you got both directions.
Thank you.
That's what we do. Any other things, now I could open up for the public?
Just the...
Heard an angelic voice, yes.
It's the first I ever sounded angelic.
Yes, sir.
Whether or not you want to, I need direction for the demographic study.
Ah, you heard the presentation by Mr. Verne about demographic studies, so that we go about this the right way, if it's a small investment, make sure we do this, I shuddered when one of the options was adding an addition to Eisenhower. This might be the most important ten thousand dollars we spend, what do you guys think? Anybody object to it?
I'm going to get three quotes and then the board will be able to select from the three.
We're just saying we want to go out and...
You stop, you stop.
More board direction.
We'll see, I don't even know if we're free. I think Whitehall was the last one.
At least more than one.
Whitehall was the only guy I heard of. I haven't heard of Whitehall's name.
We'll, we'll look around, we'll, we'll... Guys figure it out, board direction. Okay, if not, any other discussion, I will open up for the public again for any business that may come before the board. Again, if you're opting the public, you have any questions, comments that may come before the board, please come up now, state your, haven't seen none, oh, I'm sorry.
I just, for the last two months, I haven't seen a bill list for the public.
Bill list will be the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Since we have two meetings a month, and in meeting, last meeting we had them, and you had commented that we need hard copies of them, and the direction from the board is that we will have hard copies of the bill lists at all meetings, and it's the second meeting of the month that we would have the bill meeting, so bill list. So good point, Ian, we'll take care of that, yes.
Also, I believe that's safety feature right there, there's no white cover of the light.
Oh.
Oh, right there.
I hate to say this, should we put a work order in?
We'll figure it out.
We'll have a fixed next meeting, Mrs. Kilcom.
Well, don't make any problems.
You want to stand?
I understand, thank you, ma'am. No other comments, I'll take a motion for adjournment.